Good evening and welcome to our May 30th Board of Education meeting. The time is 6:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mrs. Lavelle, can you have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Doring?
Here.
Ms. Passeretti? Mrs.?
Uh, here.
Okay. Mrs. Reyna's? Dr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Regan?
Here.
Dr. Roscoe?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mrs. Rusaci?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Eight members present and voting.
And that was my mistake, Mrs. Lavelle. I'm excited for all the awards tonight and so now, if you are able, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now I would like to bring up our Student Board Representatives from Lyman Hall, Haley Smith. Thank you so much for being here with us again.
Thank you again for having me. Um, so on the first of June, um, we have a, we had a project graduation Shaky Can fundraiser at Stop &amp; Shop. Um, the fourth, there was a late bus. The fifth, the fourth quarter end, and there was also an awards night. The sixth, there was another late bus in the ASTE awards, as well as the FFA awards. The seventh starts our senior final exams, which will follow a special bell schedule as long as, as well as all the other exams, which will be the 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, and then through the 17th, which is our last day of school, and as well as makeup exams, which we also have graduation rehearsal and our graduation, which will be at Lyman Hall. And then the 18th, we get our report cards. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now from Sheehan, Leah Butts, and Emma Ferry. Thank you so much for the two of you being with us tonight.
Thank you for having us again tonight. So on June 1st, we have senior prom at Aria at 6:30. On June 3rd, we have our senior outing in the Underclassmen Elections and Academic Awards while they're at school. On June 5th, we have a faculty meeting and our marking period four ends. On June 6th is the National Honor Society End of Year Installation and Graduation. June 7th through the 12th is our senior final exams. June 10th is the Senior Sports Award Nights, which is at 6 o'clock PM. June 11th, we have the CNA Pinning Ceremony at the Sheehan Auditorium at 6:00 PM. And June 11th through the 14th is the Underclassmen Exams.
On June 12th at 6:00 PM, Sheehan will have its Senior Scholarship and Academic Awards Night to recognize many outstanding seniors and their accomplishments. June 13th, 14th, and 17th will be graduation rehearsals for our seniors while the underclassmen are completing their final exams. Also, on June 13th, the senior class will be bused to the elementary schools they attended in town to reminisce with our friends about our years in school from kindergarten to senior year. We will be treated to a pizza truck following that event. On June 14th, Moran will have their eighth grade graduation ceremony. Our graduation ceremony and the last day of school for all students will be Monday, June 17th. June 20th and 21st, there will be an overnight college road trip for prospective college students still attending Sheehan. And on June 21st, our final report cards will become available. And finally, thank you for giving us the opportunity to represent Sheehan at the monthly Board of Ed meetings this past year. We wish everyone the best of luck next year.
Thank you so much. And Haley, Leah, and Emma, I just want to say thank you. I can't believe we're finally at this last meeting. We appreciate you coming month over month and being so prepared and so dedicated to this position. It really has been an absolute pleasure. I hope you enjoy your look back as you travel through the different schools, looking back on your time in your education in Wallingford, and just best of luck to you in your future. I know I can speak from the board to say thank you so much for all of your updates. It's really been amazing and we wish you nothing but the best. So thank you so much. Superintendent Belizzi, I will pass this over to you for a presentation of awards. The highlight of tonight's evening, for sure.
Yes, it is definitely the highlight. Um, so good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. Uh, before we get started, uh, this is just such a fun night for all of us and we just want to say congratulations to all of our students. Um, all of these achievements and honors that we're going to give out tonight are quite remarkable. Uh, it's lovely to be here to be able to honor all of the students who have worked so hard and shown so much dedication over their years here. Uh, and we wish you all nothing but the best in your future endeavors. And so we are very excited to have you all here to begin honoring all of you. And to begin with, we're going to start with inviting up our high school administrators, who are going to start with our valedictorians. So we can begin with, um, Lyman Hall. Do we want to start with Lyman Hall? Mrs. Amy Holt, come on up.
Hi, everyone, and good evening. So I'm Amy Holt. I'm the Assistant Principal of Lyman Hall High School. Um, and I thank everybody for their time this evening so that we can, um, kind of say a little bit about Mert. So Mert, where are you? I hope you're here, that'd be really embarrassing. Hi, Mert. If you've ever met Mert, he's kind of very quiet, but an amazing kid. So Mert's had, um, a number of accomplishments and contributions to Lyman Hall and our school community. Um, in addition to his extensive and commendable accomplishments, his work ethic and academic record, Mert has been named the valedictorian for Lyman Hall's class of 2024. Mert has also earned the title of an AP Scholar with Distinction, has received the Society of Women's Engineers Certificate of Merit, and is also the recipient of the Seton Yale Book Club Award. He's an inductee of the National Honor Society and has served as a student leader on the Wallingford District Diversity and Equity Committee. Mert is also a member of the Lyman Hall Chapters of the Key Club and DECA. He has volunteered his time to clean up the Quinnipiac River Trail and is also exceedingly involved in the mosque and the United States American Muslim Association, volunteering in a variety of capacities. Um, Mert this year will be attending Princeton University in the fall of 2024. And Mert will be, um, an excellent addition to that community. I'm from New Jersey, so anybody going to New Jersey is good in my book. So, um, if we could just have Mert, you want to? Mert's coming up here? Okay, Mert, you're coming up here now. Um, and give him his recognition. Thank you. Do you want us all in the picture? Oh, okay.
Hi, everyone, I'm Enzo Zako, I'm the principal at Sheehan. Ronan, where are you? All right, you know, we can have you just uncomfortably stand next to me while I talk about you. All right? Thank you. We are very proud of our valedictorian for the class of 2024, Ronan Liu. Uh, he, um, is our, of course, top-ranked student. He excels in our most rigorous coursework. He is a strong leader within the National Honor Society, making a positive impact as activities chair and vice chair of the Scholarship Committee. Uh, he is a National Merit Scholarship Program commended student and an AP Scholar with Distinction due to exceptional AP, uh, SAT scores and AP exams. His academic accolades include Excellence in Chemistry Award and the Harvard University Book Award. He's also our class president. You've been class president since freshman year or sophomore year? What was it? Freshman, junior, senior? So I remember him as a freshman, being up there and giving this incredible speech. I was like, who is this freshman? Just lots of charisma, um, and that definitely shows in some of his other talents that I'll get to in a short bit. As class president, he does lead by example and has the respect of his peers to lead the class. His talents are evident well beyond academics, excelling in extracurricular activities. He's an athlete, participates in indoor and outdoor track, soccer, and cross-country. His contributions in our theater arts programs and music programs have been equally impressive and entertaining. His talents on stage have been apparent throughout his time at Sheehan, starring in our musical and drama productions. He has even co-founded an active a cappella group with several of his other talented classmates called Acquired Taste. Together, they've performed at numerous events, both within the school and within the Wallingford community. Um, he gives back to others, giving over 200 hours of community service. What's most impressive about Ronan is his kindness, strong character, and his humility. He leads through his actions far more than through his words. Um, he seeks to major in cell and molecular biology at Tulane University in New Orleans in the fall and pursue a career in the medical field. Congratulations to you, Ronan, as valedictorian and to your family.
I'm back. Okay. Um, so our salutatorian for Lyman Hall High School for the class of 2024 is Katell Colvin. I'm not going to make you stand up here, so she's right over here. Katell, in addition to her academic accomplishments, which obviously we all know she's earned for the four years of her career, has also many other accomplishments and been a part of the Lyman Hall community. In addition to her academics, her career has included, um, being a member of the band for four years, which has included the clarinet section leader. She has had dedication that is also evident at one of her, oh my, I'm like lost over there. Her leadership and dedication is also evident as, um, one of her many other talents, which included being a member of our softball team, a member of the French Club, Book Club, and peer mentorship program with the band. We look forward to her goals. She's going to be studying at Worcester Polytech Institute and she will be studying biomedical engineering in the fall. Congratulations.
Kristin, where are you? Come on down. So Sheehan High School is proud to present Kristin Costa as our salutatorian for the class of 2024. She is an impressive individual whose determination and work ethic is second to none. She excels in our most rigorous courses. She is the recipient of many well-deserved awards that include the Yale Book Award, Rensselaer Medal for Math and Science, the Rochester Institute for Technology Women in STEM Award. She's also earned the Seal of Biliteracy in Spanish and is an AP Scholar with Distinction due to exceptional scores on advanced placement exams. She is also a leader among her peers. She has served as the Student Council Activities Chair, helping to plan student council activities on behalf of our student body that are engaging and help build a strong school community. She's also the co-president of our environmental club, organizing cleanups and beautification activities throughout our school grounds and within the community. Her altruism certainly extends beyond that to many other community service projects as well. Um, she has also participated in Sheehan Athletics as a member of the outdoor track team and volleyball teams. And she has participated in other Sheehan activities as a member of the mock trial team, competing against other schools and helping to bring great success to Sheehan High School's mock trial team this past year. She was also a member of the String Ensemble and served on stage crew for our dramatic and musical performances. Most importantly, Kristin is a genuine and caring individual. Her genuine desire to learn and achieve will continue in the fall at Tufts University up in the Boston area, majoring in Biology. Congratulations to Kristin as Sheehan salutatorian and to her parents on these well-deserved accolades. Congratulations, Kristin.
Okay, next we have our Student Board Representatives. Did they say you did? So why don't you guys come on up? We have from Lyman Hall, Haley Smith. And from Mark T. Sheehan High School, Leah Butts and Emma Ferry. So I just wanted to say thank you. I know I'm a little short. We just wanted to say again, thank you so much to the three of you for all you have done. You come here every month and provide us with the updates and we truly appreciate it. It's always very thorough and informative. Um, and so we wish you all the best with everything you do moving forward onto your next endeavors. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. What do we have? Okay, we have up next our CAAB Student Leadership Awards. And so these awards are given to our students um, in middle school and high school who exhibit exemplary leadership skills. There are two students from each district in CAAB and they're eligible to receive these awards. So we are honored to be able to present them to them this evening.
Good evening. I'm Frank Chowidzik, principal at DAG. Congratulations to all of our students who are here tonight to be recognized. It's an honor to present the CAAB Student Leadership Awards to our two recipients from DAG, Addison Knight and Doug Tronner. Come on up.
Good evening, I am Dan Bologna. I am the Assistant Principal at James H. Moran Middle School. First, let me say it is fantastic to see some of my former students who are now here. Just about all of you are taller than me. The, and even better, the two that I'm going to have come up here are already taller than me in eighth grade, so that's even better. But congratulations to all of you and to your families as well. So I'm happy to present, um, the CAAB Student Leadership Awards to both Charlotte Hall and Vincenzo Verna.
So for Lyman Hall this year, our two recipients are Zalila Poyer and Hannah Sweeney. If you guys could come on up here.
And for Mark T. Sheehan High School, we have for the CAAB Awards, Riley Hunter and Sajak Timlfsina.
Okay, tall in the back, short in the front.
Okay, our next set of awards are our South Central Area Superintendent Association Recognition Awards. Um, so these awards are provided to our students, who are, um, it's based on community service and academic excellence. And so we are excited to be able to honor our students from both middle school and high school. So I think we'll start with our middle schools first.
It's an honor to recognize Evan Zalaya as the SCASSA Award winner for DAG.
And from Moran Middle School, our recipient is Meredith Lee Birkin.
For Lyman Hall High School, it is Justin Jeong and Jack Laughin.
And for Mark T. Sheehan High School, Leah Butts and Brandon Noon.
Okay, next we are going to recognize our students who are receiving the Seal of Biliteracy. And I'm going to invite Mr. Todd Snyder up to present these awards.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to all of our student award recipients. This is a great time of the year and, uh, it's wonderful to see all of the great things that our students do. The Seal of Biliteracy is awarded nationally to students who are bilingual and literate in a language other than English. Students must be able to read, write, listen, and speak at the intermediate mid-level of proficiency. This means they understand main ideas and supporting facts and passages and narratives. They're able to maintain conversations about themselves and topics beyond themselves, express thoughts, get what they need, add descriptions, tell stories, and ask and answer a variety of questions. This is an optional assessment that our students choose to complete and takes about six hours. This award is a testament to the hard work and commitment of these students to pursue a path of biliteracy. This year's recipients have earned a seal in French, Latin, Arabic, Italian, Bosnian, and Spanish. Please join me in welcoming Wallingford's new 2024 recipients of the Seal of Biliteracy. We'll start with, yes. So we'll start with Lyman Hall. I'm going to, it's a kind of a long list, so I'll read everybody's names and we'll save the applause until the end. First, Haley Baker. Isabella Benavides. Gianna Bernardo. Zahara Brangero. Katell Colvin. Sofia Concepcion. Luca De Lucia. Pablo Dominguez Solis. Lysa Fernandez. Isabel Carjanis. Michael Mastriani. Caitlin Mather. Brynlin McCormick. Ava Myrto. Genesis Marrera Solis. Henry Murphy. Yaris Olano. Mert Ozturkoglu. Jonathan Poyer. Zunera Raza. Monica Rodriguez. Chek Sai. And Sergi Zambrano.
So for Mark T. Sheehan, we'll do the same thing. I'll go slower. Okay. First, Hedrick Alvarez. Katherine Contreras. Daniel Creola Roldan. Mia D'Angelo. Beckett Demeo Stone. Viann Dominguez Mendoza. Lisa Dukas. Casey Ekstrom. Ava Fernicola. David Fritz. Stephen Gomez. Fernando Gonzalez Fonseca. Jennifer Huerta. Kristin Kostka. Munther Hussain. Brian Medina. Ryan O'Malley. Miguel Ruiz. And Reynaldo Sanchez Serna.
Okay, our next set of awards will go to our senior students who have achieved scores of distinction on the Scholastic Achievement Test. And so we'll start with Lyman Hall with Mrs. Amy Holt.
So the following students, please come up. Olivia Cabrera St. Pierre. Dominic Coella. Katell Colvin. Joe DiFrancesco. Luca De Lucia. Hannah Jackson. Zara Jafari. Cameron Kaplan. Isabella Carjanis. Anaya Kumar. Dylan Lamb. James Lynch. Nicholas Mastriani. Joe Mazafaro. Kaylee McGovern. Caleb McMoran Abeca. Paul Mundacall. Henry Murphy. Mert Ozert Oglu. I never can, I'm sorry, Mert. I'm really sorry. I try so hard. Jason Parenti. Angel Patel. Jonathan Poyer. Chek Sai. And Cecilia Tron. Thank you. Congratulations to all these guys. Congratulations to all these guys.
I just wanted to reemphasize this award that the Lyman Hall recipients and the Sheen recipients that are about to get, it's for a 650 or better on the SAT for either the English, the math, or both on each section. And that is not easy. I don't know when the last time anybody looked at the SAT was. I kind of looked at it recently, and it is a challenging test. So it's a very impressive thing that these students have achieved the status on either math, English, or on both sections. All right, so for Mark Tishian High School, we have Satvik Agnihotram. Kerry Alderice. Oliver Brown. Megan Button. Leah Butts. Ryan Carmen. Sarah Cruwell. Lisa Dugus. Olivia Fritz. Fernando Gonzalez Fonseca. Riley Hunter. Kristin Kaskka. Angelica Cattula. Ronan Liu. Hannah Nagy Laurent. Kaylee Skasina. And Sajag Timelsina. Congratulations to all of you.
Congratulations again. This is the highlight for sure, being able to celebrate all of your achievement, the culmination of the hard work, the dedication. Parents, guardians, this is also a kudos and a congratulations to you. It really does take a team and a village. And so, students, please say thank you to your adults in your life who continue to support you, and make sure you live in this moment for this honor that you've received. Congratulations again.
Okay. We are going to move on to item number six on our agenda. If you would like to take a moment to be dismissed, by all means, go ahead. I know it's riveting stuff up here, but I understand it's a busy time of year, so I'll just give it a moment to allow things to clear out. Okay. All right. So as we continue, I'm just going to read this public comment statement as we head into the public comment section of the agenda. Do we have anyone for public comment? Do we have anyone for public comment? Going once? Great, I will skip reading the public comment statement. Do you? Oh, that is public comment. Okay, so let me read this. "The Board of Education welcomes you to our meeting as we always look forward to public input. Before we begin, we want to review the process of comments and questions for this meeting. The terms are per Policies 9323 and 1120. Public comment is intended for the Board of Education as an entity, as individual board members do not have decision-making authority. Public comment is intended to allow citizens to comment and ask questions. These will either be answered during this meeting or at a later date by the superintendent if additional research or materials are required. We ask that everyone behaves in a respectful way that sets an excellent example for the students we all wish to serve." And with that, we can open public comment. And if you wouldn't mind just saying your name and address for the record, that would be appreciated. Oh, come on, if you can come to the microphone, please, that would be fantastic. Thank you. Maybe step a little closer, they're unable to hear you. Yes.
60 Pang Hill Road, Wallingford, Connecticut. So I just have a complaint against Mr. Corso, the principal of Lyman Hall High School. I sent an email to him, and he never responded my email regarding my daughter's situation. He instead happily and immediately talked to my daughter, violating rules of confidentiality. Why he had to talk to my daughter? What were his intentions? I felt ignored by him as a mother, insulted, and even discriminated. I do not trust his attitude, his professionalism, and ethics towards a very important issue. Instead, I repeat again, he went to my daughter, a teenager in a vulnerable situation, and I told her about my email. Now my daughter is angry at me even more. What kind of an individual do that? Not a principal of a high school. I reached the school to see if they can help me. What I received instead was a slap on my face. I just say, be careful and take care of your children because you never know who's next to them. I found out also that this principal has criminal record. It is public to your homework, your diligence. I'm just alerting, that's what I did with my email. But instead, I found out dark souls, dark shadows. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come and share your thoughts with us.
Okay. Dr. Roscoe, if I can for just a moment. So I'll follow up with you tomorrow. We can communicate. I'll call you tomorrow, and I can follow up with that, okay? Yeah. It's up to you. If you'd like to stay, you can, or you can leave. We're going to just move on with the rest of the meeting, but I'll reach out to you tomorrow to follow up. Thank you.
Thank you. And with no other public comment being seen in the audience, I'll move on to item number seven, the consent agenda. So I'd like to make a motion to accept items 7.1 through 7.22. Can I have a second for this?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda passes. We do not have any items removed from the consent agenda. So we are moving to our correspondence. Mrs. Passeretti?
Thank you, Dr. Roscoe. Tonight, we have a, we will be accepting a donation for an AED and an AED Cabinet and Supplies. AED stands for Automatic External Diffusion Editor. And this donation was received and given to James H. Moran Middle School. The, this gift was given in the honor of Joseph D. J. Mezzi, from the family of Joseph D. J. Mezzi. I just wanted to say quickly that Jay Mezzi was one of our former students. He graduated from Lyman Hall in 2005. He unfortunately passed away last month. He was one of our star players at Lyman Hall and the hockey team and the golf team, and he will be greatly missed from his, by his friends and family. Obviously, we accept this heartfelt and much-needed gift in honor of Jay, and we are very thankful for that, and condolences to the, his family and friends at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Passeretti. Moving to our committee reports, there is nothing under 10.1, so 10.2, the system-wide PTAC update. Assistant Superintendent Latour.
Good evening, everyone. We had our last system-wide PTAC meeting for the year about a week or so ago. It was this past month. And the meeting was really essentially a time for us to wrap up all of the work that was done this year on a variety of different topics. Mrs. Bellisi gave a budget update, and members of system-wide PTAC gave a community update as well. Timeline for the Parent Choice Awards was discussed because that Google form goes out in June, and all of the members from the local PTACs were brought up to speed on the timeline and encouraged to send out the word to their families. The principals will send those Google forms out, and it's just a reminder of what a wonderful opportunity it is to nominate any staff member within the school that a family or student wants to discuss the impact that they had on their child's life. And it really is, it's an amazing award ceremony that we have in the fall. I also want to just mention, you know, it was Brian Revard's last meeting as PTAC president. He is moving on as his children are moving forward into high school. And so it's just a public thank you again to all of the time that he has spent with system-wide PTAC, his hard work and dedication to the students of Wallingford Public Schools. We will certainly miss him greatly on that committee.
Thank you so much. Assistant Superintendent Turner?
Good evening. We had our last special education PTAC meeting of the school year on May 5th. One of our board-certified behavior analysts conducted a workshop for parents on autism to really support families on how to support their child with autism in the home environment. We, it was very well received. We had quite a few individuals participate, both virtually and in person. We will be sending out a survey in the next couple of weeks to all families regarding topics of interest for next year. We did receive some feedback regarding having a bilingual opportunity for parents at our meetings, so that will be our focus next year to provide some more opportunities for families for interpretation during our meetings, so all families can participate. Thank you.
Thank you so much for both of those updates. Mr. Bondi, do you have a food service update?
So the Food Service Strategic Planning Committee met on May 21st. We did a quick overview of state review findings, which I'm happy to say were very good. We discussed the community eligibility provision and whether or not we wanted to sign on to it as a district, and we decided not to. And we discussed summer feeding and whether or not we would want to, and that was our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And our CAPE report, Mr. Derry?
CAPE recently held a webinar with the state legislative update on everything that happened this past session. CAPE has also announced that the next statewide CAPE conference will be on August 8th. More information about both of these events are on the CAPE website, and if any of the board members want help finding it, feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you so much. Moving right along here to Agenda Item Number 11, we do not have any old business. And that leaves us with executive session. So I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any objections? We are in executive session. And we are back from executive session. Thank you so much for bearing with us. Now we are moving to item number 13, our instructional committee reports. Mr. Vado and Dr. Reed?
All right, 13.1. We discussed superintendent's goals and evaluation for the 2324 year. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to accept the evaluation of the superintendent for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. Next, we have the presentation of the 2425 Annual Teacher Evaluation Report, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Thompson. No? Yes?
Yes, hi, everybody. So-
I don't want to put anybody on the spot. I just thought-
Typically, Dr. Thompson, you do the first part, and I do the second part.
Excellent.
Okay.
Okay. That's wonderful. So, um, excuse me for one second.
Do you want me to do it?
That's okay. I apologize. I had something else, but I do have it here. So, um, the report summarizes that you have before you, the annual evaluation report, and we'll be talking extensively in a few minutes about our Professional Development and Evaluation Committee, or PDEC, and the recommendations that they've used to continue the work with the Connecticut Educator Plan, which, again, we'll be talking about in a minute, that's changing for next year. But this year, current year that we- But this year, current year that we're in, we once again were afforded the opportunity to continue the flexibilities that were provided during the COVID pandemic. And the Wallingford PDEC Committee adopted those flexibilities once again this year. One of the things that we did as a district was we invested in the Performance Platform, the Unified Talent Perform, which warehouses all of our evaluation plans and memorializes and captures all of those evaluations, goal-setting, observations, et cetera. This was a change from a state site, ed reflect, that was used for years but had been discontinued. So we had to invest in a new platform, which PDEC evaluated a series of, you know, those platforms. And we went with the Unified Talent, which closely aligns with our Power School platform, et cetera. So we were pleased with that. In addition, the PDEC dedicated considerable time and energy to creating new evaluation plans, which you'll hear about in just a few minutes as we move towards the next school year. We attended workshops provided by the CREG Centers, CEA, ACES, and other, you know, state support-run plans. And we'll be talking about all of that in just a few minutes.
Thanks, Dr. Thompson. Part of the teacher evaluation piece is the professional development component to it. This is not a list in its entirety of every professional development opportunity that was provided. One of the things we tried to focus on this year is providing necessary time for our teaching staff on some of our PD days to work with their colleagues within the same department in terms of lesson planning and reviewing the curriculum. Because as you know, from reading all the curriculum that comes to you, we had quite a bit of change in some of our areas. And it's necessary whenever there's major changes to curriculum to provide time to review it and unpack it before teaching it, as well as after teaching it, debrief, especially when it's new. And as you know, K1 especially was brand-new. 2, 3 was in year two of ELA, and 4, 5 was in year three. So part of our professional development plan involves taking feedback from our teaching staff at all levels through surveys that occur after professional development, surveys that happen during department meetings so teachers can identify areas that they would like to see in terms of professional growth. And then there are always things that we do as a district to prepare for the beginning of the school year. So as I've done in the past, I've separated them in two buckets. Some of the listings for technology and software. Follett was one. Our librarians use that across K-12. Smartboard functionality in the classroom, as many of our smartboards have changed. The SAM platform and HMH is for our Read 180 and Math 180 program that we use in intervention at the secondary level, as well as Canva, which was a tool that our World Language Department chose to use in terms of creating student materials and providing opportunities for students within presentations. At the preschool level, CTSEDS continued refinement in terms of creating goals and objectives within that new platform. The SRBI process for early childhood play-based learning were just a few things that were major initiatives for our preschool this year. A lot of our professional development falls under the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment piece. And what we, as I said, tried to do was provide a lot of time for colleagues to work with one another related to data analysis and instructional planning to meet the varied needs within the classroom. We continued our five-part series in structured literacy. This Cohort 7 and Cohort 8 that we managed to do this year concludes really the effort that we started in the 1920s school year in providing all of our teachers the professional development necessary and the structured literacy approach at the elementary level. We have been able to train every elementary teacher, interventionist, special ed teacher, multilingual learner teacher, librarians, speech and language pathologists, and special educators. It was a major initiative. And we are at, we're at the end of the tunnel there, which is a really nice feeling in terms of providing professional development in the teaching of reading. We changed universal screens this year to the dibbles, so we did a fair amount of work within there. Our high school teachers spent a tremendous amount of time at Lyman Hall with NIASC in preparing reports for their review. We also had legal updates in 504 and transition planning. We did a lot of work with staff in terms of verbal de-escalation training to assist staff members with challenges within the classroom, as well as, or in Gillingham training and training with functional behavior assessments for our students. Under the Social Emotional Learning, Rethink Ed, which is a software platform that Mrs. Turner brought in this year, was a major focus with our mental health staff to work with professional development opportunities within, as well as our continued work with the Attune School Approach and Frank Bakon working with our schools in order to provide increased awareness and strategies in school culture and climate to promote positive, strong student-teacher relationships. And in the diversity and equity area, we did a multi-series of PD with our special ed department and our multilingual learner department related to identifying the differences between challenges with language acquisition and language delay for the numbers of our multilingual learners that are experiencing language acquisition within our schools, as well as indigenous studies through a Mohegan lens, because that is also a state focus in terms of incorporating that into our social studies curriculum at all levels. So again, this is just a sampling. And as we continue to look towards next year and looking at the feedback we've received from our departments, we will continue to plan opportunities for staff to experience professional development in the areas that they have identified, as well as having our building-based professional development committees work on plans for the days that, as a building, all members of that particular building can participate in different workshops at their choosing, as well as self-directed.
Mrs. Latour, Spire Escapes Me, what was that?
Spire is a program that is used within our special education classrooms in the area of language arts.
Okay. NIASK. One of our schools is going through it now?
They did, yes.
Which schools?
Lyman Hall.
Lyman Hall. And are they at the first part? Are they just beginning? Or is it-
No, they're concluding.
I can't remember.
Yeah, they completed it.
They completed it?
Yep. So they started the beginning of the year in August with their NIASK representative. They had their work groups work all year long. So a lot of the PD time on those early release days were spent in their committee work. And then we had our visit in the spring.
So they already came here and visited?
Yes.
I'm surprised they didn't ask for board being involved in some way. They usually have a couple of board members, and then they interview them.
Yeah, I know the process has changed a little bit. So when we get their final report back and have an opportunity, we will certainly share that.
And when it's-
Sheen is up next. They deferred for a year. So they will be doing it not next school year, but the following school year.
Okay.
It's a tremendous amount of hours and work on the school, on behalf of the school.
Oh, yeah.
So we felt it was very important to provide a lot of time for the school to work within to complete the report.
I just find it peculiar that they didn't ask for board input in any way. Because in the past, they've always done that. But it's okay. As long as we get it. Oh, I guess you're waiting for me? Okay. I'm a little confused what 13A, B, and C are. So perhaps you can explain, Dr. Thompson, what the- I know, I'm assuming D is the total plan.
So, I'm happy to do that, so thank you. So this is all in support of the upcoming revised teacher and administrator evaluation and support plans as prescribed from the state. So if you look at the memo 13.3A, talks about the Public Act 23-159 and the Connecticut statute that provides the PDEC Committee that we talked about earlier in the Board of Education to adopt a new teacher and evaluation and support plan by mutual agreement. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about that, as well the administrator plan as prescribed by the state guidelines. So the terminology is a little bit different now. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on both. But you'll see before you, instead of a teacher plan, they call it an educator support plan. And what was the administrator plan is now the leader evaluation and support plan. You have copies, draft copies of both in front of you. You also have a digital version, which I'll talk to you about, has different colors on it because it's in draft form. And if you wanted to review it, you certainly have that opportunity to do that. So 13D is the presentation that you have before you. This was sent to you in your packets, but the colored one has got a little bit more information I wanted to provide for you in terms of context. And I'm happy to walk you through the process. So on page two of the presentation that you'll see, we were charged, all districts in the state were charged over a year ago to begin the process of a new updated administrative and educator evaluation plans. These plans are different from the current model, which was done years ago in support of teacher evaluation. Some of the differences we'll go through in a few minutes. And you'll see some of the changes that we have to incorporate per the state and how we've taken our existing plan, that we have areas that really worked well for us. And in addition, thanks to the good work of our PDEC Committee, incorporated both the state model, our own version, and then some updates especially related to professional development. So we attended several workshops that were provided by the RESCs, ACES, CREG, CES over the past year. Many of them were held at the Cass Building in Cheshire. And these workshops provided opportunities for the state to explain the foundation and the theories behind the changes in the evaluation and support plans. I have to thank our PDEC Committee, which comprised teachers, union representatives from both our WEA administrators, central office members, and Board of Education members. I want to thank Dr. Reed and Mr. Vado for spending a lot of time and having a lot of good conversation regarding the changes that you're about to hear. And we've added per the state statute requirements, a parent educator, who will now be on our committee to help steer the professional, relevant professional development for that particular group. The plan, as it's rolled out in its first year, which will be next year, had to meet a certain number of non-negotiables in the state plan. And I'm going to go over those with you in a second. With the understanding that this plan is fluid. In other words, just like everything else we do in our classrooms and in education, it's, we're going to change it and we're going to adapt it. We're not going to do something brand-new, but we're going to amend it as a PDEC Committee based on the feedback from those who are being evaluated and those who evaluate to make it as functional and effective a plan as it can be. We're going to continue to promote best practices, and it will evolve over time. Page three talks about the state's non-negotiables. And those include, and this is for, again, every district, right? And had to adopt a plan. A minimum of three meetings per year, goal-setting mid-year conferences and end-of-the-year summative conferences. There are certain timelines that they have to follow that you'll see in the plans and we'll talk about. The emphasis with this new plan and everything you'll hear is all about collaboration. The goals for the teachers, the goals for the leaders have to be mutually agreed-upon goals based on what will drive teacher practice. And so those protocols you'll see in our plans. We had to identify a minimum and a recommended number of observations aligned with the professional needs of our staff, which we do in our plans. Articulate agreed-upon processes for both formal and informal observations, which you'll see in our plan. And again, the most important part in the collaboration is feedback. How are we going to provide feedback to educators? And how do we consider multiple qualitative, quantitative indicators of evidence for those conversations? And we've infused those in this plan. In addition, the state wants to ensure that we have a tiered support action plan for those teachers that are struggling. This is, the intention is very much so to be a supportive plan, not a punitive plan. So it's almost like when we think about our students in terms of like a tiered intervention model, this is what we will be offering our teachers, and this is what the state, is a non-negotiable for the state that we have to incorporate. And then, so we'll talk about that as well. And then you'll find in these plans a dispute resolution process, which is similar to the current plan. If somebody doesn't agree with the evaluation or has a question about goal-setting that they can't agree to, what's that dispute resolution process? And for teachers, it's on their plan on page 17 that you can look at after, and page 16 and 17 for the leaders. Page four talks about the standards that we have, we'll be using. This is from the state model. Similar to the plan that we have now, the rubrics for the teachers, the standards for the teachers will be using the Connecticut Common Core of Teaching Standards, or CCT. That will continue. One of the things that PDEC did really good work, a lot of subcommittee work and research, was to adopt additional standards that make each role relevant. So the standards would apply, for example, school psychologists, speech pathologists, library and media specialists will have a set of standards related to their practice. So it's not everybody using the same. If you're not a classroom teacher, but you'd be in the current plan, that's what you're evaluated on. And as an administrator, you have to make it work. So you'll see that that is, that's in the plans. Appendix one for both educators and for administrators will be using the Pcel standards, which are the professional standards for educational leaders. Page five talks about the goal-setting process, which will occur in the fall. And the goal-setting process, it is the evaluator and the evaluator have to work together to outline the scope of each goal. Together, they'll determine the goal or goals that will be completed. And what's new with the state model, those goals can be multi-year goals. So during the evaluation cycle, goals will be revisited. And you can see that graphic. The district will have goals that you'll see- The district will have goals that you'll see come from our portrait of the graduate and the work that's being done at the district level. The schools, as they begin their goal-setting, will derive from the district goals, and the teachers' goals regarding their professional practice will have to align so that everybody can kind of see a through line from the district all the way to the work being done at the teacher level. And then, you can see on page six, the portrait of the graduate that we're using in terms of our, our model there, our visual. And then, the goal seven, page seven, I'm sorry, continues the goal-setting discussion in terms of how it's tied, multiple sources of evidence, which are delineated, some of them are delineated in the actual packet, and they have to be mutually agreed-upon goals. And then, from there, we'll be working on how do we provide relevant professional development for those teacher goals. What's really nice, what Mrs. Latour alluded to earlier, is that we are already having those types of collaborative conversations. And so that should, we are hoping that that will, we're sure that will continue. Page eight talks about some of the sources of evidence, and also, as required by the state in their non-negotiables, a mid-year conference and an end-of-year conference, all of which should be talking about the growth criteria based on those goals, and its impact on students. So this is, this isn't an IAGD like it used, like it currently is, 40% of our students will. This is about how teacher practice, setting goals that will impact student growth. And how does that happen? It starts at the goal-setting process, and then throughout the year, as the leader meets and evaluates and observes a teacher, has conversations with the teacher, all of those conversations have to be centered around the, how are we measuring the progress or the growth of the goal and supportive of students? And then if you turn to page nine, in addition to the goal-setting and the mid-year and the summative, which all work towards measuring or talking about how the educator is progressing in their goals and support of student growth, there are also going to be observations, classroom observations or professional observations based on their role. The state recommended that we have two categories, tenured teachers and non-tenured teachers. And so we've adopted that. The tenured, the non-tenured teacher is someone who has been, is new to the profession and has, after, is non-tenured for four years, or a veteran teacher who comes to our district who's been tenured previously, but for the first two years is non-tenured. And so you can see the types of classroom observations or professional observations that will take place, broken down by non-tenured educators and tenured educators. It's the same for administrators in terms of just the number of years. They don't have tenure or non-tenure. So for non-tenured educators, it's three observations of what we call professional practice. Those are no formal observations, in essence, which include a minimum, a pre-conference, which focuses on lesson design, which will focus on learning intentions, what am I going to see, what's the purpose of the lesson, what should I be looking for? It's got to, it's not a one-way conversation. It's got to be a collaborative conversation to set that, a minimum of a 30-minute in-length classroom observation, and then a post-observation to debrief. And you can see there that that has to be done in a certain amount of time, and it has to then be documented in our learning platform, and over a certain amount of time. In addition to that, we would have a review of practice, which we do now, which the state has, allows for. And for the tenured educator, the informal observations which currently occur, it was agreed upon through a consensus model with PDEC, that we would continue for non, for tenured educators to have, we call them teaching and learning or informal observations, a minimum of two with a post-observation. And the leaders can also have a pre-observation to talk about what am I looking for? So really trying to foster that conversation, really trying to make sure that there's a specific intention for these meetings, and then providing that feedback, which is critical. In terms of the rubrics that I talked about earlier, one of the things that we have incorporated is something called a single-point competency. Basically, it's taking those rubrics, which we used to have, which we still have, kind of an approaching, you know, what's it look like for somebody in the beginning, and what's it look like for somebody who's really an expert in the year, different areas of those domains? And we combine those into one competency, so it allows everybody to focus on what good teaching and learning looks like. And so, that will be reflected in the platform. And then, finally, on page 11, just a little bit of information on those support models for teachers who are struggling and need additional support. We have a, based on the non-negotiables from the state, we have a three-tier support model. Each one incorporates more opportunities for teachers to get help and growth. It may be, you know, working with another teacher, it may be going to a conference, it may be doing some independent study or looking at best practices. And then, it's up to the evaluator to go in and work with them and see if they're, what's happening with those tiers will help support the teacher's growth. And finally, if, after that, tier one and then a tier two, then it becomes a much more directed intervention, that we would, we would get, you know, another administrator involved and work more closely with them in terms of specifics. So it's a lot, I know, I appreciate your patience with it. It is all outlined here. I don't know if anybody has any questions I can answer for you.
I know you're shocked, I have a question. How many teachers do we have in the district?
585-ish.
And how many people will be able to possibly evaluate them, just anyone within 092?
Anybody who's an administrator would be an evaluator. So we have, we have current, currently, the same folks would be doing that. So each administrator has a certain number of evaluates that they're dedicated to, and what they do is they start with the goal-setting and they follow them throughout the course of the school year. And that's what, that's what they would continue to do.
So what's the recommended caseload?
So we have 29 administrators, and typically our caseloads vary between 20 to 22, 23, currently this year, per administrator. And so our curriculum coordinators, our special education coordinators, our building administrators, they are all the ones doing the teacher evaluations.
Okay. It seems really cumbersome? Like, it seems like it's going to be a large part of their job now, if they have to evaluate multiple times, and then, how much time between tiers? I mean, essentially, even though they're using soft language, it's like a progressive discipline, the tiers, so how much time?
Yeah, so progressive support.
Support.
And so, yeah, it, again, it depends on the communication, on what we're seeing, so it would be individual, much like a tiered support for students. And there would be timelines established. You know, tier one is something anybody could avail themselves to. Any teacher, whether they're, you know, struggling or whether they're mastering an area, can collaborate, go into another teacher, for example, or go to a workshop. As the tiers progress, there's more direct direction, more intention, and I think specific timelines as well, based on, you know, on the area and what, and whether or not we're seeing growth.
Are there particular triggering events that would create, you know, that would kick it up to the next tier? And is, it sounds like it's the teacher's choice if they want the support, but is it the evaluator's decision if they want to put them on a certain tier of support?
I think, I think it is a collaborative discussion. I think at some point, if I'm a leader, then there's going to be, you know, I have to have evidence. I can't just say, you know, Dominic, you need to go on a tiered support plan because, you know, and I have something to back it up. But, by the way, we'll talk later. But, but I would be able to say, you know, we, I've been in your classroom a few times now, both formally and popping in, and I see that, you know, the students, when I ask what's the purpose of today's lesson, they don't seem to know. So let's, let's talk about how we can make your lessons more intentional, your planning, your purpose, more purposeful. So I think it depends on, on what the, what the concern is and what the support that might be needed.
And I may have missed it, did they have to submit lesson plans?
No, well, no, they don't have to submit lesson plans, but part of the pre-conference would be, what am I going in to see? One of the, one of the really lengthy discussions about that pre-conference talks about ensuring that they, that there's structure and that there's organization in the planning.
Okay. That's it for now.
I'm going to follow along the poll in the same thread that Mrs. Rusaci was pulling on. Three observations for non-tenured educators.
Minimum of...
Plus, a pre-meeting, plus a post-meeting. So that's three meetings for an observation times three, which is nine meetings or nine parts. Multiply that by 20, nine times 20, right? Right? Nine times 20, that's 180.
Yes.
Meetings.
Yes.
Plus, they have to do this by a prescribed date.
Yes.
Which means they have to do it in the beginning of the year, they have to do it by February, and then by June 1st.
Yes.
How are they going to do that, plus get their job done?
So that's what they do now, that's what they do now. No, it's a great question, Mrs. Regan. That's what they do now, in essence, and it is, it's, it's, the purpose of it is, if I'm an instructional leader, I need to be visible, I need to be in classes. So a meeting isn't, let's, let's block out 30 minutes to talk about, you know, what I'm going to, it doesn't have to be that prescribed or that formal. It's what am I looking for when I go into the classroom? When I'm in the classroom, they're doing that anyway, and then following it up with the feedback. If I, if I just go in and I don't give, if I go see your class and I don't give you feedback, or we don't talk about it as a team, which is the whole point of this process, then I don't know, I don't know what I'm doing, whether it's good or bad or indifferent. So we're doing that now, and if you look at the current plan, much of this is already in there. It's just ensuring that the dialogue, that the feedback is, is, is happening intentionally.
So, I'm sorry.
Okay. No, I was just, it just, it feels, I mean, if they're doing it now, then, then that's fine. It just, it feels like a lot of paperwork.
So, I'm just, I don't mean to interrupt, but it is something that our district is doing now. It's a little bit of a different kind of plan now because we've been on the flexibilities, but this is what our administrators do currently. And so, that is the current caseload that they have right now. And so they do manage it, it is a big piece of their job, but they are in and out of classrooms all the time, and they're using that as their evaluations to provide that feedback. In terms of lesson plans, we do have a policy that goes along with that as well, that requires our teachers to have lesson plans. This plan is just something that's come down from the state, it's a little more detailed, it's a little more broken up. It's a little more similar to what we had prior to the flexibility plan. And what we try to do as a district over the summer, when we look at caseloads for our administrators, because we'll assign the teachers for all of our administrators, albeit curriculum, special ed, and our building, is we try to break it up between tenured and non-tenured, you know, within that 20 to 23 number, so that they're not doing as many meetings. But we did have administrators on this committee who did give feedback to the plan as well, and do understand the elements of it and the requirements of it.
Because that was my other question, is balancing between the tenured and non-tenured. And just for my own edification, is it always been that tenured teachers get a not, an informal observation? Has that always been the case?
So, I think, pre-COVID, yes, I believe it was that way. Once COVID came, the state changed it, and we could implement the flexibilities, and so that's where these pieces have come from, where it was more of the informal observations, which they're still getting observed. It may be a little bit of a time change, there may be no pre-observation to it, but there's the observation piece for the 20 minutes, and there's also the post-conference. Keeping in mind, even with the flexibilities, if administrators have concerns, they can do additional observations, informal, or they can also do formal observations if they're seeing concerns in the classroom, or concerns with the instruction, the management, and whatever they're seeing. So they can request additional, or do additional observations of the staff as well.
And that's, I think that's what I was just driving. I just want to make sure that there's the flexibility to put in a formal observation if needed. I don't, I absolutely trust that a tenured teacher is doing their job and they are doing it to the best of their ability, but I think, just to make sure that there's some flexibility in case something else, if there's any concerns or any additional things that are needed.
That's in the document.
Correct. Correct. To Dr. Thompson's point, it is in the document. I think it says it on the bottom of page 10, like I'm just looking at the bottom here. So, it does, it does allow for that flexibility to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to add, and I appreciate the concern for the administrative load, a couple of things. One, this, I think, there are so many elements to an administrator's job, but this is, to me, one of, if not the most important, getting into classrooms and really seeing what's going on for our students. So I appreciate all the time and effort that went into the plan. And I also was very impressed by the committee overall, and the collaboration between administrators and central office and teachers. And teachers were very vocal about saying, as we're talking through it, so is this okay for administrators? We have to look at the administrative load. So I thought that was impressive, too, that they were even vocalizing, it wasn't just administrators talking about that. So I just wanted to add those two elements, having been a part of it, and I do think it's a pretty solid plan.
Just one question, so forgive me if I'm just not following this. I'm a little confused, what exactly is a single-point competency? I know in the memo it said that we're phasing out the rubrics. Are these single-point competencies taking the plates of the rubric? I'm just really going to follow that.
So, so I apologize if that's confusing. We are not phasing out the rubrics. We're still using the same rubrics that the teachers are familiar with now, and the state recommended that we continue to use those, that rubric. And this is just taking that, that, those effective teaching practices and putting them in, and what it looks like for effective teaching and for the students' effective learning, and having it in kind of a one-page reference. But in the event that, for example, one of the domains is classroom observation, if I find that there's an area of weakness, there are concern, then I would still go to the other strands within that rubric and say, we need to, this is what I'm seeing and this is impactful. So it's not, I guess, the point of the competency, Mr. Doring, is we don't, the new plan doesn't have ratings, so teachers are no longer given a grade, if you will. It's about the feedback, and so it's trying to make those expectations a more clearly-focused area, and that's what a single-point competency does.
So the feedback is based on the rubric, then?
Yes, yes. In other words, I can go into your... Yes, yes. You, in other words, I can go into your classroom, right, as a, as a leader, administrator, and we can have a conversation. But if I can say, how do you think it went, as, I gotta have evidence, right? So again, I see you being, doing really good work be, because I see students engaged as evidenced by, um, the rigorous assignment, the, the small group tasks, the student-to-student discourse. So I have to still have that type of evidence in order to, you know, provide quality feedback. And that's one of the things we're gonna work with, um, in terms of the professional development for the leaders, for the administrators. What does quality feedback look like? What does evidence-based feedback look like? They know, you know, this, this is continuing good work that, that they're already engaged in.
And this feedback and this evidence, that comes off of the competency? Off of the rubric or off of both?
It's the same, yeah. The, the, the competency comes from the rubric.
So does every teacher have their own competency? Forgive me if I'm just not understanding something here.
Right. So the single-point competencies are taken from the rubrics. The rubrics reflect the, the job that's being done. So a classroom teacher, if, if you look at, in the presentation, if you look at page four, you'll see that the competencies for a classroom teacher, um, or the standards for a classroom teacher, which will be reflected in a teaching competency, will be different than, say, the library media specialist, because it's a different job. So instead of going to observe a library media specialist with the same rubric as a teacher, I'm gonna have something that's more relevant to their, their role.
Okay, I think that answers my questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, I was part of this group, and I have to say, historically, I, I think I've been part of every, um, committee that worked on evaluation going way back. In fact, I think right before COVID, Mrs. Latour, I think you were the representative from the main office with me on that committee. Met in that little room there. Um, anyway, um, I, I have to say, I just wanna preface this by saying, I appreciate all the work that everybody did and all the time that you put into this, Dr. Thompson. But I'm trying to, I'm hoping you can look at this through my eyes. I, I have been involved in education a long time, and of course, I come from when things were a little bit different than they are now. Uh, a, a lot different in certain areas. But before I begin, before, before I say anything else, I just wanna remind everybody, our administrators are the instructional leaders of the school. They're not just there to discipline, um, do lunch duty, uh, bus duty, or whatever, and help out. Their job is to go into classrooms and to make sure that our teachers are doing their job and that they are teaching to the curriculum and maintaining the correct, um, amount of time to that curriculum, that they're not, that the, I think they call it mapping, to make sure that curriculum is moving at a correct speed, that the children get what they're supposed to get within a particular school year and a subject. Anyhow, having said that, um, you know, I, there's so much in here to understand and to read. And I could, I consider myself somewhat intelligent on education, but when you read some of these things, I, I just think there's just, personally, I think there's too much to read. And, and, and it seems to just, the plan just seems to center on, um, what goes on in the classroom, the learning, meeting those objectives, and being evaluated on those objectives, which is great. But there are so many other things to teaching every day. The day-to-day experiences that happen in the classroom, the things that a teacher is responsible for, that I don't think this plan addresses. Now, if I can indulge everybody to look at this packet, the draft, just to point out a couple of things that I'm trying to talk about. The one that says the educator, educator. I'm a person who's a believer in rubrics. We do it with our students. We always did it with teachers. And I don't think it's being done with this plan. A more or less like a checklist of what things have been done. Did they meet the subjective, whatever? One of my biggest issues is, um, on page ten, the chart, with non-tenured teachers and tenured teachers. And I'm gonna sound like a broken record, I know. Um, I'm a firm believer that everybody should get a formal observation, whether you're teaching for one year or twenty years. That's my opinion, and I think I need to state it. You know, when I, you gotta remember, I was immersed into this, into this group, and they are all newer than I am as far as teaching. And, and I had to sit there and I had to try to, to, uh, try to understand everything that was going on and what they, what their meanings were, what, what, what they meant by certain things. I'm a little tired, so excuse me. Um, anyway, when I mentioned, uh, uh, an observation, a formal observation for a tenured teacher, I immediately got a response from a few of the teachers, it's gonna be a dog and pony show. That's the answer I got. Which I don't think was appropriate, but anyhow, there was a reason why I brought that up, and I tried to use my experience to make that understood. I don't care if a teacher knows that an administrator is going into their classroom. Um, let them plan a lesson. Let me go in there, first of all. Let me see the lesson plan in the pre-conference. Go into the classroom. Can they execute that lesson the way they said they were going to do that? Okay? Put on the dog and pony show. Prove to me that you can write a lesson and you can carry out that lesson. But also prove to me that if during that lesson it flops and you realize it's flopped, can you recoup somehow? Do you have something up here that can make you take over or, or change your, your, the way you were going and come up with something else? Do you have a bag of tricks that you can lean on to, to recoup and come back and bring the, bring the class back together again? I, I feel that sometimes, um, you know, there are so many things we are, that people request of us and expect of us and expect us to do with the people that we employ. And I think we need to have a good grasp as far as what's going on in the classrooms. And I think by just walking through once in a while, it's not gonna do it. And while I'm at that, I think anytime anyone goes into a classroom to observe, whether it's for ten minutes, a half hour, an hour, it, something needs to be written up each time. And I don't think that's clearly written in here either. Uh, it says verbal or written. I, I firmly believe, I know when I went into a classroom, the person you observed needs to see what you saw, and it needs to be written down for their benefit. Anyhow, this, this chart, to me, um, I, I don't feel is adequate. I think that we need to have at least one formal observation for tenured teachers. Um, of course, I think, uh, uh, if, if a principal feels that there's a need to go in, I think they could do that. They could ask for a formal observation, that they wanna go in and observe a class. When I go to, uh, page thirteen, well, maybe I'll just forget about that one. I mean, if you just read that one paragraph, it, it says so much. And see, to me, I think there's too much, it needs to be more specific in certain areas. If you go to the next page, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place here. Page fourteen. Development of new learning and impact on practice. The educator can demonstrate how they develop new learning within the continuous learning process through multiple sources, and how they use their new learning to improve practice aligned to their continuous learning process goal, strategy, focus. What's the proof? Where, where do you know, how is it, how was an edu, how was a, uh, an administrator, how does an administrator know that this was actually done? Where's the evidence? Impact on students. The educator can demonstrate how they positively impacted student learning within the continuous learning process, using example evidence and can articulate connections, rationale between the improved learning and their own changes in practice. I mean, my gosh, you need a degree to understand some of this stuff and to go through it all. I just think it's too much.
So, Mr. Vado, if I may, thank you for your thoughts and, and actually for bringing your concerns to the committee, which we really do appreciate your voice.
Are you cutting? Are you saying I can't go on?
What's that?
Can I go on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were.
No, I wasn't done.
Okay.
Some of the things I just jotted down. Um, I'm glad you asked about the single-point competencies, because I was, but I, although on the presentation part, there wasn't a good definition, so I finally got it. Sometimes I don't think thirty minutes is enough to observe somebody. Especially when we have classes in a high school of eighty minutes. Uh, do you go in the beginning of the period, the middle of the period, the end of the period? There's a difference, you know? If you go in at the beginning of the period, you're gonna see a certain type of instruction. But at the last thirty minutes of that class, you might not see the instruction you thought you were gonna see, or what you did see at one time at the first thirty minutes. Again, it's, might sound minor, but it's something just to think about. I'm just throwing these things out there. Been there, saw this stuff in action, and I, and that's what I'm basing my, uh, my things on. How do we know if the teacher has enough knowledge of the subject that they're teaching? Perhaps they're teaching in an area because of riffing that they don't normally teach. Do we know that they're following the curriculum the way they're supposed to follow the curriculum? And that's where lesson plans come in. Do they, in other words, I'm throwing these questions out. Through those thirty-minute observations, formal, the three, and no formal for the tenured, how do we know if a teacher understands their students, the, the abilities of the, all the students in their class? Do their daily plans support their student needs and the curriculum? What are their, what, what resources do they use? Do they know how to get resources? What's their technology knowledge? Can they use technology? If you were doing a formal observation, even with a tenured teacher, and if you said to them, we're having a pre-conference, I want, I'd like to see a lesson using technology. I think that's good. You, you wanna see if everybody is you, doing those things that they're expected to do on a day-to-day basis. How are they differentiating? Are they differentiating? Are they meeting the needs of all the learners in their classroom? Are they using formative and summative assessments? Are they conferencing with students? I, 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 I just, this is all pointing to some type of a rubric, that a person can check off, yes, I did this, or just, the administrator hopefully through a, a number of observations can figure that out. Am I going?
No, I think there is a rubric.
No, that, I'm not talking about that kind of a rubric. I'm talking about, um, a list of expectations that an administrator would evaluate a teacher on based on standards. This one standard might be curriculum. Another standard might be on, um, collaboration with family or students. And.
But can I, can I ask you a question, Mr. Vado?
Yeah, go ahead. I, I'm, I know I'm all over the place, but I do, I want you people to realize I do have very serious concerns about this. This is so important.
I understand that you, that you wanna see a checklist, but I would imagine that that, like, if I'm interpreting this correctly, that that checklist can't be the same for every teacher, because now what they're moving to is a goal setting, right? And so I would imagine the checklist, while I understand there has to be a certain set of competencies, there's also a goal here involved that they will be setting. And so that, that will, they will be measured against that goal. And I very much trust that our administrators are going to know this and know what the expectation and what is expected of that teacher throughout that. So, um, I think it's hard to put like a one-size-fits-all to the teachers. If they have similar goals, yes, I think you can have a similar checklist. But I, I would think that this is, this is a little more personalized to the goals and the, um, the objectives of that particular teacher.
We use the Connecticut standards for teachers, right, and for leaders, to look at the rubric of where are you within that rubric? And then their checklist, Mr. Vado, is where's the next step you need to go to, right? So if I'm a teacher and I'm right now in the developing range and I do X, Y, Z in my classroom, then when the administrator goes in, they're gonna see if they can do the next step, right? So that would be their checklist. And they're having that conversation with their administrator in the beginning of the year and ongoing as they go. So for example, um, your planning, right? So are you including your target? Are you including differentiation for all your students? So you'll have a conversation, and then when the, they, you go in, you look at that Connecticut rubric, and that's the, the checklist that they're using. So there is a checklist. There is common language and expectations that we expect every teacher to do, but not every teacher is going to be on the advanced side of that rubric. They may be in the beginning. They may be in the middle. So that's the individualization that we do. Does that answer your question?
It sort of does, and I just wanna make sure I, I'm understood.
And there's ones for leaders and for teachers.
But everybody, goals is nothing new. Everybody writes a goal, and I would, I think the way it's said here usually is a district goal, a school goal, and a personal.
Domain four addresses the professionalism, and I think that was one of your questions that you had. So when we go in, we look at, how is that teacher addressing parents? How are they communicating with parents? Are they involved in the community? So each domain looks at a different area for that teacher, and we do look at the whole four standards to really look at, how is the teacher performing? How is a leader performing? Are they, so domain one.
Where are the domains in here?
So that's the, I think there's just a link in that plan. So you don't have the actual rubrics. So that's some information that we could provide, is that rubric. So you could see, domain one is classroom behavior. You're, the, the teachers.
Why is it in here?
I'm not quite sure, but we can provide that for you. It's very lengthy. It, it's pretty thick, um, but it is very extensive. And it's something that even going through preparatory school, every single teacher and every administrator is aware of what are the professional expectations of a teacher? What are their planning expectations? What are their assessment, instruction? It looks at all of those areas.
So when I go in for my end-of-the-year conference, that administrator will take those domains. They will know. They will have, they will have a knowledge if I communicate with parents.
Yes.
And if I, how are they gonna find out?
So we look at.
How are they gonna know all that?
So we, we expect the teacher to provide evidence in that. Show me some email communication between you and the parents. What does your parent square look like? Um, and they're used to providing evidence of those areas. In the beginning of the year, you have that conversation. In the middle of the year, they show you evidence and you're like, mm, it's not quite enough. Let's look at, you know, between now and June, showing me a little bit more. Or I'm a little concerned about your approach, so let's look at that. Or wow, I love how involved you are in the community. Or I love your behavior expectations in the classroom. So those are things that we look at throughout. And when you're doing an informal, it's really good to be able to just pop in and say, oh, look, their targets are on the wall, or on the boards, so the, the students know what their expectations are. And that's just to pop in and pop out. So if that's one of the things that you're looking for, for a teacher, or one of the things the teacher's working on, it doesn't take a whole thirty minutes or forty-five minutes for you to see that. You see that walking in the classroom. Behavior expectations, you know that as a principal. You know, walking in the classroom, what that teacher's relationships with, are with that student. And you can easily have a conversation, just looking at them for five minutes. Wow, you're, you know, I can see that you have expectations for all the students. Or, you know, let's look at how you handled this.
Okay, I gotcha. How do you find, how do you, um, how do you, uh, find out whether or not a teacher has been following the curriculum at the proper pace? How is that, how is that done?
So that's done in those informals, to be honest with you.
I beg your pardon?
In those informal walk-ins, right? So you pop into five different fifth-grade classrooms. Teacher A, teacher B, teacher C is on this lesson. Teacher C is on this one. You're like, oh, you know, where are you within the, the unit with your peers? So those are the quick drop-ins that you can get a lot of information out.
I can walk by a classroom and know.
Exactly.
But my point is.
The, the curriculum piece, just so I can add, cause I know what your concern is, and it's my concern too, quite, quite honestly. That is parallel to the formal evaluation plan for teachers, because our administrators, our curriculum coordinators, our central office administrators, were walking through classes all the time, not just for evaluative purposes, but for visiting and for the sole purpose of seeing, without the evaluation process, where people are in the curriculum. What are they doing? What are the students doing? How is it playing out in the classroom? And, and those happen daily. Um, you know, our special ed coordinators, our curriculum coordinators are in the buildings.
You know, our special ed coordinators, our curriculum coordinators are in the buildings constantly.
All right, so you are, you are, you feel comfortable knowing, thinking that all? This is being done. These walkthroughs are helping find out what, where people are in the curriculum.
Absolutely.
And that they're mapping it correctly. You don't think they need to see a lesson plan for a week to see where they are and how, how they're progressing?
No, because, one, the lesson plan piece, all, all the administrators at the building levels speak to the, that expectation at the beginning of the year. And then there is the expectation that the lesson plan is visible and, and needs to be visible for whomever, you know, walks in the room. If there's a question about that, Mr. Vado, after somebody walks through the classroom, whether it's for an observation or just because of a walkthrough, an informal walkthrough, that doesn't get written up through evaluation, there are conversations that take place, that verbal feedback is really important.
It may not written as well.
It, it could, they do it both ways, to be quite honest. Some people leave sticky notes before they even walk out of the room. Sometimes they have, they have a chat. Sometimes, you know, it, it depends on what's happening, and it, it could be all of the above. So, you know, there, there are two separate lanes of this highway. And there's the teacher evaluation plan, which has so many components in it in terms of opportunities to speak to some of the questions you mentioned about how are you differentiating for students? How are you integrating technology into your lessons? Do your, how are you communicating the curricular unit or curricular objectives with your families that you can have in your pre-conferences and in your post-conferences, regardless of whether it's a formal observation or an informal observation? And then there's opportunities for staff to work, to, to walk through on a daily basis and, and see it in action, in play. And if there's a concern that arises, then it's a conversation and it's a follow-up. If it's, if, if it's a praise, it, it's a written feedback or a ver, a piece of verbal feedback. And these walkthroughs that occur with special education coordinators, with curriculum coordinators, with building administrators, oftentimes too, they pair up and go together. And they will go into every single first grade classroom during the math block to make sure that they're in the ballpark. They're not always going to be on the same exact lesson every day. But it is a question when you may walk into one classroom and they are a week behind all of the other classes, or two weeks behind. And then that's a conversation with both the building administrator and the coordinator to say, what's going on? How can we help? And that's where conversations about kids and mastery happen and take place. And then plans are made so that they don't fall too far behind. Because the pacing of curriculum is critical as a student goes through the course of the year. Because that, you, you need to get through all of your units, or you're setting that child up for a difficult time in the next grade. And so those are happening.
But my point is, if you had a lesson plan for a week before time, you, you wouldn't have to wait to find out that it's been two weeks that they haven't moved on.
But a week of lesson plans too. While you can have a, a draft of where you think you're going to go, right? You need to be thinking every day at the end of your, your lesson, at the end of your school day, when those kids leave your classroom, get on the bus and go home, and you're reflecting, who understood it? Who didn't? How do I need to go back? And it, it's a constant moving target, as you know, right? So having fully, having a plan in place, which our teachers do, it's always going to need to be adjusted based on the needs of the kids who are sitting in front of them. So, you know, I, I feel like our building administrators and our coordinators do a really nice job of monitoring the pacing. The elementary in particular, because they're teaching four content areas, they have a pacing guide. They know which units fall in each marking term. And during those grade level meetings that they have weekly with their building administrator, that the coaches come to, or the curricular coordinator comes to, where they start to look at, where are you in the unit? Are you on target? Are you on pace? If you're not, why not? Or if you're ahead, what, what's going on? You know, and they have those, those deep conversations about how their students are gaining the knowledge of that particular unit to make sure that someone's not getting too far ahead or too far behind.
I get you, I, I understand all that, but I'm just. I'm trying to, I'm trying to. I'll shut up after this, folks, I know you probably want to move on. But this is something I'm very interested in, because I am sick of hearing from parents that their child has not gotten this far. The other class did this much, my kid did not. My kid does homework during class time. There are too many, I don't, personally, I don't feel there's enough accountability in this plan. That's my biggest gripe. And I guess there's nothing I can do about it. I guess I'm just an old geezer here who expects things to be done the way they used to, and I'm sorry about that. But my interest is in, in continuity, accountability, and making sure everybody steps up to the plate and does their job, and does it on time and does it well. And I don't think that's happening all the time. And I, we can't have perfection, I know that. But I do think, and I, and I'm trying not to bash teachers, I'm not trying to do that, any teachers that are listening. But we all know that there are times when people need a little push. And, you know, I'm sick of hearing, our scores are low, don't they do this, don't they do that? And I'm just trying to find another way to help all those things that we hear. And I think an evaluation plan is the perfect place to start. And you have to look at it through my eyes. I'm looking at something that is. Totally different than the way I was trained, okay? I, I think there's a lot of wording in here, a lot, that I think could have been eliminated. I think it's just too much, and a person who has to be evaluated based on all this, I mean, it's, it's just a lot. I'd rather see it more concise, right to the point. This is what we expect, this is how it's going to be done, boom.
So just.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay. So just for clarification, in case anybody's watching. The language that is in this plan, you'll, you'll see from your presentation. And if you go on to the, the electronic draft version, the majority of the plan's language is taken from the state model. And in addition to that, that includes those non-negotiables. The second largest component is what we adapted that we knew was working from our current plan. So you'll see that, and some changes in terms of goal setting and processes were part of the research that the PDEC subcommittees did. That's what, that's what, what you have in front of you is a combination of those three elements. And again, just, just for clarification, because I really do appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Vado. And I agree with you about the accountability. And although I, I tend to think it isn't here. If you go back to what you referenced on page ten, in terms of those evaluations, observations, there, it is in there that everybody has to have a post-meeting within a set number of days and a written feedback within a set number of days. So those verbal conversations do have to get memorialized. That we do that in the talent, in the perform platform that we talked about earlier. So those conversations are captured that way. And in terms of like, how do we know that, you referenced page fourteen with growth criteria. The very next column there talks about potential sources of evidence. So it's not just pie in the sky, there's actually recommendations of how do we ensure that we're finding ways to capture the growth in, in the plan? So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was.
Listen, I think this plan is good in that, for what, for what you're, for what you're looking for with the, with, with goals and whether they, people have made those goals or whatnot. I just think there needs to be more to get that accountability part in there. I love the tier part, the tier one, tier two, tier three, that's excellent. That's what we need to have. Because there are teachers who need that help, and that's what we have curriculum coordinators for and administrators. And I think that's good. I just, again. Well, you know what.
No, I know, and, and please, like I said in the beginning, and just to wrap it up, it, it is a fluid document. We're going to review this with PDEC again in the spring and, and mid-year and say, how's it going? And we'll, we'll continue to adapt and change and adjust based on the feedback and what we're observing in terms of the practices, so, thank you.
Thank you. Just coming off of that, one other question I have, looking at this chart on page ten. If I'm reading this correctly, I believe that the tenured educators are not doing a pre-observation meeting before any of their visits. So what exactly does this pre-observation meeting entail? Is it just a matter of reviewing the lesson plan? Is there more to it?
There, there is more to it. I, I think, you know, Mr. Doring, it's a great question. It's the conversation, which maybe ten minutes, maybe. What, 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 what are you trying to do in this, with this lesson? What should I look for? How can I give you feedback based on what you want to accomplish in the lesson? Let me see that lesson plan. Then I know when I, when I observe you and we have the follow-up meeting, how did you think it went? You asked me to look for these three things? This is what I saw, this number of students were doing this task that you wanted to happen. How do, how do you think we can make sure that everybody in, in, is, is getting the material? Did you see somebody that was missing? Those conversations occur every day. And that's the purpose of the, having those professional conversations. That's what an instructional leader needs to do. And so that's the purpose of having those, those meetings.
And why are the tenured educators not having these pre-conferences?
Well, again, to, to, that's, was a debate. And, and it was in order to, based on their experience and, and going in to see, the leader, the administrator could certainly go in and ask, next time I come in, I want to have a pre-conference, because I have a concern about your planning or your organization, so.
But how would they pick up on that if they hadn't seen the lesson plan in advance?
Because they would find out from conversations following the lesson. And when I go into a classroom, I know, I know what. I know what structure looks like. I know when there's a disconnect. And that's part of the conversation I'm going to have with the teacher.
Okay, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. None of this is intended as disrespectful towards any of the administrators, any of the teachers. But I will be honest, I am concerned about not having these pre-conferences. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one last question. The, the corrective support, I really like the tiers, but the, the corrective support piece. I don't know, I'm, I'm sure now, like, I, I believe that a lot of the corrective support or the, is happening right now where our coaches are offering support to teachers that, that have areas where they may need improvement. We just talked about eliminating all of the coaches. So I'm a little bit worried that when we have people that are, have gone through the tiers and are now on corrective support, who is going to offer, I think it's explained, it's like a mentor or a coach. Are the administrators that we're asking to evaluate also going to be doing the coaching? Or what, what happens now?
So that's a very good question. And if there are areas of concern within an observation, and every level is different, right? So without the K eight coaches, we have, you know, our administrators are in place to provide feedback when they're in and out of the room in a non-evaluative way. So our, our building principals are in the room all the time, our curriculum coordinators are in the room all the time. And they're not in, they don't stand, stare at the lesson, walk out and, and don't say anything, right? You know, they are providing really targeted feedback, and they're all very skilled and experienced at being able to drop that feedback or have that conversation in a very direct, explicit way. And so this is what they do. This is a part of their job. At the high school level, just given the size of the buildings, right, and the number of staff within, we still have the instructional leaders there, and they're doing a lot of. They're in the classrooms a lot as well, and they're providing that ongoing feedback as well. I mean, I'm not going to lie, y'all know I love the coaches. And, and, and you know, I will not go on a soapbox right now, but you know how important I feel that they are to providing feedback on an ongoing, non-evaluative basis to improve instruction. That being said, they're not the only ones in a building who do that. And so when we're faced with what we're faced, our building administrators, this is not new for them. This is not going to be something that all of a sudden they start doing. They've been doing it. And so they will continue to do it, because as Dr. Reed said earlier, and it was echoed by other board members, they are the instructional leaders of their schools.
Yeah, I definitely get that.
And they have the coordinators, all the coordinators, to assist with that as well. That is why we have the level of administration to be in the classrooms all the time.
Great. I just, I was, wanted to sort of call that out. I didn't know if we should be considering in the budget conversations, you know, I, I feel like the high schools are set with their instructional leaders, but should we be considering keeping one middle school coach and one elementary coach in case there is like extreme, if, if there's corrective support that's needed? That's, that's honestly why I'm asking. I'm trying to think about the bigger picture of what's the reality of corrective support.
And appreciate it. But, you, you know, when you look at a, a frequency of, of feedback and all of that, having one split between two middle schools or one floating around the elementary schools, really, you know, that, that's a challenge. So, you know, getting into those routines, which our building administrators are, of, of being regular observers of classrooms is really where, where it's at, to be honest. And so that's where those great conversations will continue to happen.
Okay, is there, you know, for the future, I want to, you know, if there's a larger impact on removing the coaches, I would want to know. So is, is there a way to like track if there's a difference in sort of quality or difference in, you know, what's missing? Is there, is there a way we could at least try to keep track of that? So if we need to ask for something later, we can? I would want to know really what's the real life impact.
Yeah, I, I, I get it. And as we go through the next school year with whatever cuts are finally approved by the Board of Education, we, we are going to have an impact, and we will continue to monitor that impact. And we will continue, regardless of what the position is that's cut. And we will continue to reflect on where we're at and what's missing and, and evolve. Because that is what we do. So, sure, we will absolutely keep you posted on just how the buildings in general function with this level of cut two years in a row. So. But I have every faith in our administrators to, they know the task ahead of them. They are invested in the success of their teachers and ultimately of their students. And, and so they recognize, as we've been doing this as a district now for several years, of going in and observing and doing walkthroughs and providing targeted feedback, that that will continue on into the next year.
Thirteen point three? Is that where we're on? Okay, I make a motion to approve the educator and leader evaluation and support plan.
Second.
Did I say that correctly? Okay. Seconded, any discussion on the motion? No, okay. May I request a roll call on that?
Mr. Doring?
No.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Rasachi?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
No.
Dr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Okay, thirteen point four. Approval of acceptance of retirements. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Beth Rondo effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Beth Rondo has been a reading interventionist since August of twenty fifteen for a total of nine years. Beth Rondo previously worked as a physical education teacher from August nineteen eighty-eight through June nineteen ninety-two, as a compensatory education teacher from August nineteen ninety-two through June two thousand. She has worked a total of twenty-one years in the Wallingford Public Schools. She has worked a total of twenty-one years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept the retirement of Kristen Officer, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Kristen Officer, that is the correct last name, is it? Not, yes. Kristen Officer has been a school nurse since January twenty oh six for a total of eighteen and a half years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
I second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion passes. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept the retirement of Vanessa Mather, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Vanessa Mather has been an elementary teacher, a step teacher, and a middle school science teacher since August of two thousand two for a total of twenty-two years in the Wallingford Public Schools.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? No, I mean, and, not abstention. Opposed? Abstentions? None. Okay, thirteen point five, approval of acceptance of resignations. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept the resignation of Catherine Barrows, effective June thirtieth, through, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Catherine Barrows has been a speech and language pathologist since August of twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion passes. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept the resignation of Aubrey Lamb, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Aubrey Lamb has been a wise social worker at Highlands since January of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. I make a motion at the Board of Education, accept the resignation of James Russell, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. James Russell has been an elementary school teacher since August two thousand fifteen. Any-
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay. I would say moving right along, but that doesn't feel appropriate. So, we are going to go to the Operations Committee. Mrs. Regan?
I'll make this one short and sweet. Um, so, the Operations Committee met, oh, no, we had a special Operations Committee meeting that we met on May twentieth. Um, and I think the, I mean, we went through the reports for, uh, Mr. Barone gave us the financial update, Mr. Bondi gave us the financial update for the, uh, food services, and Mr. Deptula gave his update. The only thing that I think I would really like to point out is that we do have a very small surplus of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. When I say small, I mean small in comparison to the overall budget. Um, just as we go through this budget process, and I, I made this statement at our Operations Committee meeting, this is less than a half of a percent of our total budget, which means we are being very fiscally responsive, responsible, and that there is no fluff in this budget. This, what we say we are going to, um, spend is what we're spending. There are some mild fluctuations, mainly around utilities, maybe around unemployment, whenever, but we stay to our budget. So, I would just applaud everybody for, um, the work that's being done, and know that we are very, very fiscally responsible. That's all.
Thank you, and thank you for reiterating that point during this meeting. Okay. Superintendent Belizia, we'll pass it to you for the administrative report.
Sure. Good evening. Um, as we wind down the school year, I just wanna mention a couple of things as we move forward. Um, this year, we have adult ed graduation Thursday, June sixth. Uh, it's at six o'clock in the Sheehan Auditorium. Um, this year is the, uh, first year we will be hosting at both middle schools and eighth grade promotion. And so, both of our middle schools will have them on Friday, June fourteenth. They'll both be at one o'clock. Um, Marian Middle School will have it at the Sheehan Auditorium, and, uh, DAG will host it at the Lyman Hall Auditorium at one o'clock. So, we're looking forward to that. It's the first, first year for that. Uh, it will be recorded and added to the website for anybody that cannot make it, because it's inside, so I know they're working on space availability for families. Um, and the last thing is just that high school graduations for both high schools will be Monday, June seventeenth, uh, both outside, hopefully, no rain.
We heard that request loud and clear for, for no rain. Perfect. Thank you so much for those updates. It's certainly a, a very exciting and busy time of year as we wind down in the school year. I now have some announcements, and I just wanna, um, pay special attention to these announcements. If you happen to look at our posted agendas, we did make a, a change of two of the meetings, what the content will be. So, on Monday, June third, that's actually going to be a Special Education Board meeting, where we'll continue with budget workshops, and that will be in the Board of Ed conference rooms at six thirty PM. On Tuesday, June fourth, that will be our Instructional Committee meeting via Google Meet, and that will be at six PM. So, there's just a flip-flop there. If you're looking at the agenda, again, Monday will be the special, uh, board meeting related to the budget. And then on Wednesday, June fifth, we also have a Special Education Board meeting at the, uh, conference room, the Board of Education conference rooms, that will be at six thirty. And then Monday, June tenth, it's Operations Committee meeting via Google Meet at six PM. And the date of our next meeting here at the Town Hall is Tuesday, June eighteenth, and that will have a start time of six thirty PM. And with no other business to come before this board, I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.